Welcome to the October 21st meeting of the Murfreesboro City Council. Councilman Shacklet, I think you have someone to do the prayer and then will you give the pledge?
I will, we'll cover it, we sure will. Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce to you tonight Jeff Parker. Jeff is the Executive Director of H3ARC and he's going to tell you what that stands for and a little bit about what they do and then he'll do our opening prayer.
Yes, thank you so much. We are the Housing, Health and Human Services Alliance of Rutherford County, or HARC for short, because that is a mouthful. So we are an alliance of 70 agencies, including city governments, nonprofits, educational organizations, and others who are working together to connect people who are experiencing homelessness or housing instability with all of the resources that we have to offer from all of those agencies. So a quick picture of what that looks like. Each year we conduct a point in time count where we connect with those who are experiencing particularly unsheltered homelessness, who are sleeping without a roof over their heads and in other places that are not meant for human habitation that we would want for our neighbors. In this January, we connected with 362 persons across Rutherford County who are experiencing unsheltered homelessness. But more than that, we know that there's about 10 times as many folks who engage with services from our agencies in a year. In 2020, that number was nearly 4,000 unique households worth of persons connecting with food and shelter and other basic services that agencies and others right here are able to provide. So HARC exists in a role that helps bring together all of that effort to make sure that we're coordinating and that we have a strategy and a plan so that one day we get to wake up and say, "Here in Murfreesboro, nobody has to sleep without a roof over their head." And we are working every day to be a part of making that happen. I'm especially grateful today for the continuing strategic partnership with the City of Murfreesboro and with HARC working towards that goal. We are meant to be your partner, filling that role as the COC's lead agency. It is a best practice and it is a requirement for communities to receive funds from U.S. Housing and Urban Development, HUD, several of their funding streams to have this type of an entity at work in the community. So I'm also pleased to say that those funds help us connect with even greater numbers of federal and state grant dollars to make this work happen. Right now, we're in the middle of the continuum of care funding application process and it's going to be a little over $700,000 coming into Murfreesboro agencies and across Rutherford County. So I'm pleased to be with you. I am grateful for our partnership and I look forward to that day when we get to say, "Everybody here has a safe place to rest." Would you all join me in a word of prayer? Gracious God, you have created us to be persons in community with one another. We are grateful for this community, for the blessing that we have for safety and enjoyment of our lives together. You've called us to be mindful of those who don't enjoy many of those benefits. Guide us in our work tonight and watch over all of those who work every day to make this community the place that we love, the place that we enjoy, day in and day out. We pray these things because you have shown us what it means to love one another and you've shown us what it means to stand with those who may not experience those joys. Strengthen us for that good work. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have one ceremonial item tonight, so...
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. As you know, the purpose of the Stars Award is to recognize and reward those employees who go above and beyond their normal job duties in providing outstanding customer service. The Stars Award winners for the month of September are Melissa Pettis and Frida Coldwell, who work in the Employee Service Department. Melissa was not able to attend tonight due to being on vacation. They were nominated by our own Pam Russell for demonstrating exceptional customer service and courtesy to a former employee by the name of Eric Nelson. Eric sent an email to the Department Director wanting to share how he was so impressed with Melissa and Frida's service. He wrote the following. "I was employed by the Police Department a couple of years ago and have been in contact with your staff a few times over the past several days regarding a verification of employment letter from the New Jersey Pension Board. Not only were Melissa and Frida both polite and helpful, but they answered my questions and Frida even called me back as she said she would to let me know it was taken care of. Sadly, you really don't get that kind of service hardly anywhere anymore. I just wanted to let you know how pretty impressed I was. Thank you for all that you all do." And I personally want to thank you, Frida and Melissa, for going the extra mile, providing excellent customer service.[461.40][461.40](APPLAUSE)
Pam, don't leave yet.
Okay.
Okay. You have the, also you have the consent agenda in front of you. Any things that need to be added or pulled off?
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have the minutes of the September 15th and the September 30th meetings in front of you. Any additions or deletions to the minutes?
If there aren't any, I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, Matthew, we have planning commission recommendations for public hearings.
Yes, sir. Quite a few public hearings to schedule. We would recommend that on the list that I included in my council communication, that we schedule items A through H on December the 2nd and item I on December the 16th. Item I is an annexation. It's got a companion zoning request that's trailing behind a little bit and the applicants would like a little bit of extra time for the zoning request to catch up to the annexation. A through H, December 2nd recommendation, I, December 16th recommendation.
If we approve the recommendations.
To what date?
2nd and 16th.
2nd? All right. November the 2nd?
December.
Golly, that's why it threw me off, sorry. I was like, whoa. All right.
All right, we have a motion second for December 16th, 2nd and 16th.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move into land use matters before you have ordinance 21, OZ 28, rezoning property north of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard. This is second and final reading.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, Matthew, we have planning commission recommendations for public hearings.
Yes, sir. Quite a few public hearings to schedule. We would recommend that on the list that I included in my council communication, that we schedule items A through H on December the 2nd and item I on December the 16th. Item I is an annexation. It's got a companion zoning request that's trailing behind a little bit and the applicants would like a little bit of extra time for the zoning request to catch up to the annexation. A through H, December 2nd recommendation, I, December 16th recommendation.
If we approve the recommendations.
To what date?
2nd and 16th.
2nd? All right. November the 2nd?
December.
Golly, that's why it threw me off, sorry. I was like, whoa. All right.
All right, we have a motion second for December 16th, 2nd and 16th.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have Resolution 21R33 and this is reimbursement for fire administration building expenses.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm your new City Director of Project Development. That's a long name. Anyway, four weeks on the job, so I've got three things for your consideration. Resolution 21R33, reimbursement for fire administration building expenses. Sir, information on that?
All right, any questions?
What we're asking for is approval of this and it's a, the City Council approved the fiscal year 22 CIP at the September 15th council workshop. The CIP included $500,000 for design and engineering for the fire rescue administration building to be located at the Doug Young Public Safety Training Facility site. The city intends to use, or should say issue bonds for a loan in early '22 in order to begin the design and engineering process. A reimbursement resolution should be approved before costs are incurred on this project so that general fund can be reimbursed where the future debt proceeds.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have Resolution 21R35, reimbursement for City Hall parking garage sprinkler renovation.
We're asking for approval of contract, excuse me, not the contract, that'll be in the next item. Approval of Resolution 21R35, authorizing reimbursement of expenses related to the City Hall parking garage sprinkler renovation. The City Hall parking garage sprinkler piping is in need of renovation. City staff issued a bid on September the 15th on '21 and Rice Construction was awarded the bid at a price of $3,65,945. Can I offer any questions on that or answer any questions?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to the contract for the City Hall parking garage sprinkler renovation administration.
Is there any questions on the contract? It's been reviewed by legal and it's basically a description of the intent is to remove the larger pipe over two and a half inches and replace it with new galvanized pipe. This pipe is deteriorating, it's leaking air and causing the compressors to run more often. So that's, intent is to get it back towards a safer condition.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have a contract for McKnight Softball Complex fence replacement.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, before you tonight is a recommendation to approve a contract with Premier Fence to replace all fencing, valve poles, and then backstops at the Fourfield Complex at McKnight Park. These existing fixtures were installed in the 70s and showing significant signs of wear and aging. So this project was publicly bid. Premier Fence was the only bidder, but we believe that this is a reasonable cost within the scope and is well within the budget project of the project. So total cost is $375,613 and those funds are allocated for this project in the 2021 CIP. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
No questions, move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, you have a contract for McKnight Softball Complex fence replacement.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of council, before you tonight is a recommendation to approve a contract with Premier Fence to replace all fencing, valve poles, and then backstops at the Fourfield Complex at McKnight Park. These existing fixtures were installed in the 70s and showing significant signs of wear and aging. So this project was publicly bid. Premier Fence was the only bidder, but we believe that this is a reasonable cost within the scope and is well within the budget project of the project. So total cost is $375,613 and those funds are allocated for this project in the 2021 CIP. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
No questions, move for approval.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. Thanks, Chief. All right, there's item 21, we have the BioSolids Dryer Contract Amendment.
I just want to say this, I just want to make it, say this, because when Shane brought this up earlier, this is the very first time ever, when he says, "Does anything want to be deleted or added to the consent agenda?", I almost said, "How about 21, 22, and 23?" Just for fun.
Next time, when I submit all my material to Craig, join with me.
I've always, I've only ever thought of it as a move it off the consent agenda. I could move those on. I mean, what do I know about impellers and?
I mean, now we're going to talk about?
I do like?
Greifon dryers.
We're going to talk about BioSolids now, so Darren, you're number one at number two.
I didn't say that.
So this is a contract addendum to permit a 30-month payback period for the return of a small-scale BioSolids dryer purchased by the Water Resources Department in 2019. The purchase price was $648,750, 30-month payback at 1%. We did charge a little interest for earnings foregone. It's only about $8,400 in interest. Monthly payments of around $21,100. The department is going to pay to disconnect it. However, Griffin, who is the manufacturer, will dismantle, load out, and ship it back to their facility. So this is just, we had a performance guarantee in the original purchase price and if the Griff, if the dryer did not perform to specification, then they offered a money-back guarantee. It did not perform to spec, we're sending it back and they've asked for a 30-month payback versus a one-time lump sum. So we're amenable to that with a small amount of interest. So available for any questions.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. You have Water Resource, item 22, the Water Resource Recovery Facility Tractor Purchase.
Sir, this is a new tractor replacing a 1995 John Deere. You can kind of see in the picture there that we, it has to haul these pretty large traveling irrigators across the farms. We have about 10 zones. The picture on the right, Jordan Farm, 200 acres, Coleman Farm, 400 acres. We average about 36, we dispose or land apply about 36 million gallons per month. We budgeted $135,000. The new tractor is $137,75. We did get a trade-in value with the tractor and a couple of rotary cutters of $75,500. So the total cost after trade-in is $62,275 and so we would request approval for that purchase.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we'll move to the final item, Water and Sewer Line Materials Purchase.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this is a materials purchase bid that we, our operation and maintenance put out. We're going to be doing the work. This is kind of an exhibit up here. Leaf Avenue, Harrison Avenue, Rose Avenue, Boston Street, and Clover Avenue around the Greenland Drive and Middle Tennessee Boulevard area. We did receive six bids and Southern Pipe and Supply was low bid for $155,354. This is for basically eight-inch PVC sewer pipe and eight-inch ductile water pipe. So we would request your approval for these material bids.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, we have, looks like, several beer permits.
We have six regular permits and one special event permit tonight. Three are new locations for a restaurant at 2108 Medical Center Boulevard, or Medical Center Parkway, Suite G, a grocery market at 1703 Bradyville Pike, and a nightclub bar at 1432 Memorial Boulevard. And three of the permits are ownership name changes for a restaurant at 2222 Medical Center Parkway, Suite A, a grocery market at 728 Memorial Boulevard, and a grocery market at 2840 Middle Tennessee Boulevard. All applicants have met requirements for a beer permit and staff recommends approval pending final building and codes inspections. The special event permit is for a change in date for Charity Circle of Murfreesboro.
Any questions, Ms. Brown?
If they're on, then I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. All right, any other business from staff? Mr. Core?
This is a, thank you again, Mayor, Council, for this opportunity. Sorry to bring this up under other business. I just failed to get it on the agenda in time. So what we're asking for is an elimination, or it's a FY22 Personnel Budget Amendment where we're eliminating the effective utility management coordinator position. We'd like to replace that with a part-time contract consultant position through the Smith, Sekman, and Reed Professional Service Task Order. So Mr. Steve Tate's retiring. However, there's still some, a couple of days a week, we think there would be some value in continuing through a Smith, Sekman, Reed Engineering Task Order to accomplish some items and kind of stay abreast of our very important NPDES permit for our wastewater plant expansion, as well as maintain our asset management system and deal with our water loss and infiltration inflow programs. So I can answer any questions if you have any. This is a cost savings. We're looking at about a 50% reduction from a full-time position to a contracted position.
Do we?
Second.
Motion second. Oh, you have a question?
I mean, is it because we have a kind of a set number of hours that we're setting this for?
We're looking at between 15 and 20 hours at $55 an hour. So we're going to be taking away, eliminating the full-time position with benefits and this is just going to be a straight line, $55 an hour task order.
Is there any kind of mechanism in place that, I mean, if we start, if we're, obviously, I guess it's just, would be you, but I mean, as far as just, if we start, if it starts to be in 40 or 50 hours a week or 60 or 70 hours a week, you're just going to watch that and?
Well, we would come back and we would, we would, we would bring that back to your attention and ask for a supplement.
Good deal. Just one more question.
Same personnel, same?
Yes, sir.
Motion.
I have a motion second. Ms. Brown, please call the roll.
Vice Mayor Skels Harris.
Aye.
Mr. LaLance.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet.
Aye.
Mr. Wade.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Mayor McFarland.
Aye. I have three small things before, as for, or is there any other business from council members? Craig, did you have something else? Okay. One, I want to say, Madeline, it's good that you're here.
Thank you.
Good to see you. It's that time of year, I think, where we have Leadership Rutherford who's out here. Chase, thank you for coming in late.
(LAUGHTER) I did that just for you, Mayor.
Okay. We'll make sure and note that on the form as we sign that here in a little bit. No, but thank you, you'll get to come back for another half meeting.
Just put Shane on it.
Yeah, that's right. No, but thank you all for taking part in Leadership Rutherford. It's such a valuable program, not only, a lot, I think, most all of us who are up here have all gone through Leadership Rutherford, so it's very valuable to learn about the community. So thank you all for taking your time out and being with us. And last but not least, I think today is, or tomorrow is Pam Russell, our HR Director's last day and so wanted to say thank you, Pam, for serving the residents and the employees of Murfreesboro ably and we wish you nothing but the best on your new position and your future endeavors with your family. So thank you for your hard work.[1622.26][1622.26](APPLAUSE) All right, that is all. Craig, next meeting?
We won't meet next Thursday. We will meet Thursday after that.
Okay.
First week of November.
And we'll have public comment at that meeting as well.
We will.
First meeting of the month. All right, seeing no other business, we will stand adjourned. All right, seeing no other business, we will stand adjourned.